He's the older, you're supposed to be the young one getting straight. You got it, come on. I loved it, I loved it. Oh yeah, did he respond?
Not good.
How are you?
We've got two cameras now. Shoot. Three camera shoot, yeah. This is not a traditional.
So glad to get out of there.
Okay. It's Thursday, December eighth. The meeting is on the field. First matter on the agenda. He's here. My cinematographer, who didn't put makeup on me tonight, but I want to make sure he hears me.
Good evening, the applicant is not here this evening, unfortunately. You're stuck with us again just in the middle. It's Brian Quinn, the attorney for the applicant. I also have Keith Wright here as well too, and John Ansell from Ansell Sketazin.
Well, when they have to testify if they're going to identify themselves for record, you know, this one in attorney's offices, the court will.
You may recall, almost two years ago, we were here and we received some variances from this board. It's in connection with the construction of a new barn to replace a barn that burned down on the site a few years ago. There were a number of horses that were tragically killed in that fire. Following the granting of the approvals, I think it was in January of 2010, we went back and we did receive final site plan approval from the planning board, and the applicant then went and started to look around for contractors. As part of that, spoke with an architect who, after looking at the plans, said, "Why don't you just add it as a barn to the front of the riding rink?" And the applicant looked at that and consulted with Mr. Wright, and everybody seemed to think that that was a better idea. For a few reasons. First, it removes the necessity of a separate structure. You may recall that we did need a couple of variances, including setbacks. I'm going to let Mr. John Ansell describe what the old variances were versus the new variances. But also aesthetically, if you're familiar with the site, the riding rink is a metal sided building. This would be placed in front of that, and we believe that it makes a much more attractive appearance. So we think this is a lot more agreeable to the site, and that way the horses can also exit directly into the riding rink. There's no need for them to travel outside. The barn will be constructed, for the most part, very similar to the barn that we had proposed to you and was ultimately approved. John, could you just take them through the variances that were previously granted versus the variances that are required?
John Ansell, Ansell Ziegler, surveyors, engineers and planners for the project.
Just spell your last name.
A-T-Z-L.
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. As the board is probably familiar, the barn was actually located on the west, on the east side of the site as you come in off of Acton Town Road. We required setback variance, a side setback variance, total side setback variance. The side setback variance was for a side setback of 45 feet where 100 feet is required, which necessitated a 55 foot variance. And the total side yard, side setback variance was 95 feet where 200 feet is required. We gave 95 feet, so that was a variance of 105 feet. The board also granted us a variance for overall developmental coverage of point 06, which we're still maintaining the point 06. Now, if you notice on the plan, the crosshatched area right in front of the riding arena is the new proposed location for the barn. Now, that necessitates a front setback and a front yard variance because we have to take it to the closest slot line facing the street. And we're providing 55 feet, 100 feet to guard for both of those setbacks. You do think this is a much better, much better layout, and when I go over, I will show the rendering for the proposed barn, and you'll see that it's much more attractive than the existing riding arena.
Well, attractive is...
And the variances are less severe than were granted.
Is not our main focus on this.
Correct. But the variances that we're requesting now aren't as intensive as the last time that we, the variance that we did receive.
So you're actually going to be less, except for the front?
Right. We're not requiring any side setback or side yard variance, just the front setback and the front yard variance, down to 55 feet from the required 100 feet.
We would rescind, correct, there's no probability.
We would be rescinding the side setback of 45 feet and the total side setback of 95 feet. Development coverage remains the same as previously granted. There were a number of other variances.
Well, the conditions also, we'd like to keep, especially the restricted covenant that D done in.
Yes. I'm sorry, let me take you back, because after the final site plan was approved the last time, that covenant has already been recorded. I sent those over to Paul Bounder, it's recorded. And also, you may recall that another condition that, which is a separate lot line that you asked us to abandon, that has been completed, ready and recorded as well, and filed with the successor in town. Just one other thing, just to remind you, if you've forgotten this. The lot that is most affected by this proposed front yard and minimum setback of 55 feet, if you don't mind my approach, just to remind you that this lot is the one most affected by it, and that is also owned by the applicant, Shamrock Aces. That's the one where we...
That's why we have the covenant.
Correct. This lot won't be sold without this, and this can't be sold without that.
Remember, Tom, that both those lots will be sold together.
This lot and this. A&amp;E Jason Home.
One other thing, you may also remember that Dorothy Jordan, who's the principal of Shamrock Aces, was very concerned or very much tried to avoid building a barn inside of the old one. She felt it was...
I understand.
She felt very personally about that. So that also gets that issue off the table.
I agree.
Excuse me, is the size of the barn the same as the last time?
Yes.
Exactly the same?
Same size, different configuration, slightly different configuration.
Would you like to have this one here?
Yes.
Good evening, I am Keith Wright, 47 West Grand Avenue in Montville.
Just spell your last name.
W-R-I-G-H-T.
Should have studied the Wright brothers before.
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
It's okay, it's okay. Go ahead, sir.
The barn is configured slightly differently, same square footage. The reason for the configuration change was to maintain a very important feature that Mrs. Jordan wants to keep, and that is that every stall has an exterior door. So putting the bulk of the building against the riding arena necessitates putting the wing on that goes to the north so we could access all the stalls from the outside.
Somebody asked me a little while ago, and I'm just curious, whether there is a sprinkler system to be installed inside. We discussed this last time.
You may recall that, actually both the planning board and this board...
Better go to the mic, okay?
There was extensive discussion about sprinkler systems and whether they were going to be installed or not, and we had inquired of that and looked into that, and we were told that that was not a good thing. And again, I'm not an expert in this area, but as I recall, the testimony was that the horses themselves, this is an unheated barn, that the horses themselves with their breath could sometimes set off the sprinklers without them being in the fire. So at this point, there are no sprinklers being proposed in this. However, interestingly enough, it's been two years, we've also looked into it, and you have determined that there may be a different sprinkler system that's much more localized and smaller where this problem won't occur. And certainly, for Mrs. Jordan's interest, there's always been the safety of the horses, and if that's the case, I suspect that she may very well ask if that be installed.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just another question. Why did it take so long to realize that it would have been better to have it the way it would be now?
I mean, we did suggest you kind of move it over there, something.
Well, I guess it started, what necessitated or started the rethinking of the plan was when we started getting prices to build the structure. It became a structure that was probably not going to be built. And then we met an architect who was recommended by Mrs. Jordan's son-in-law, who has built lots of horse barns. In fact, I went and saw horse barns that he was constructing at the time, and he said, "Why don't you attach this to the arena? And we could make this, we could save a lot of money doing that on exterior finishes and some things in the design." And Mrs. Jordan said, "I wanted to do that years ago, but when we built the arena, we were told that we couldn't build it there because of the, it would be too close to the property line there." So when we looked at that, went back to that plan, it seemed like that was more feasible. And one of the things that horse people like, especially in locations like this where we have some severe winters, and that access to the arena is very easy, they don't have to take the horses outside. So that's why we started considering this, and that's where we've come to now.
The only thing I would add is, is when we first learned of this, we went to the CDRC meeting to discuss that with them. We then did a consultation with the planning board, and they liked it, so we came back. We didn't want to apply without getting at least some kind of positive response from the planning board, so then we went back for a formal meeting. So it's been in the works for several months.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. You're welcome. You want to show something?
That's the proposed barn. You may recall that it was, the peak is a little to the left there, which would be to the south side, is that Keith? And so the north side is a little elongated, as Mr. Wright explained, and that's to allow all of the stalls to have exterior doors.
If you, excuse me, there are lines on that drawing, maybe John can point them out. The picture in the upper left-hand corner is the front of the riding arena, and that's the view that would be eliminated. The, yeah, it's kind of right behind it there, so.
I mean, it's not to scale, but this wall would line up with this wall and it would be hidden from the street.
We have a letter from Robert W. Godwin complaining about horse flies and manure odor. Of course, he does say that...
It was before the second fire?
They had that before the second fire as well.
Yes. And, you know, if you don't know, but that was a concern of the planning board, and we had extensive discussions about the removal of the new order processing of the ore. So that was all incorporated as part of the previous planning board approval, and I presume we're going to require the same thing, we have no problem.
I'm going to figure out where his property is, vis a vis...
It's on the 6th.
It's right below this one.
Below it, in the corner.
He's on Pascal.
He's down there.
I'm sorry, is that a window there?
It's close enough for the, to get the...
He's behind it.
No, I understand that. Who owns... Salomo Giovanna. Looks like she or he is an adjoining property owner. That one is clear. Right. And we know Godwin's down there. Right, I agree. Is this an occupied property?
I believe that's vacant land.
Towards the back, near the horse barn, it's vacant land. It's its field, it's kind of like the horse barn.
Yeah, I haven't seen it. I just wasn't sure where the property ended, where it was.
We do have a situation where there is a cattle barn across the street, and the cows also graze, a field run by that barn, north of the Jordan.
It's hard to know where the odors are coming from.
Well, if you know the difference between horse manure and cow manure, there is a great difference. I worked on a dairy farm, and they are very prolific manufacturers, they're very well diverse.
I have another question, if you don't mind. Now that you've located the barn, can you show me, where is the manure depot? When you pick up the manure from the horses, which I understand, you had about 12?
No. No, there were 12, and I think, what's the number of stalls now?
How many?
10, 12. No, I think it's, I think it's 12 stalls. Not, not that much. Well, horse manure is very dry, kind of hard to notice, not like cow manure, much, much more...
Is there going to be a difference as to where you're going to store this?
No, we had, the planning board was very specific on the location of where they wanted the manure kept, and I think it is, it is on the plan.
It is on the plan. I'll point it out to the board. Actually, we have a proposed area waiting here, but of course, the manure is going to be stored within a closed container. It's not going to be exposed to the elements, and it will have to be picked up regularly. And you'll notice that effect on the plan.
Do they pick up the manure weekly? I'm sure you had it cut it away.
I would say, it would depend, I would think, someone on the number of horses that are there, but I would say at least weekly.
There's no 18.
Line of service on a regular basis so that the horses fly et cetera, not have an adverse effect.
On the community.
The directed 25, about lieutenant recommended. Just a manure and manure removal verification. Okay, Mr. Quinn, you done?
Or is there any other question? Do we have to try and answer them?
Why don't we let the public talk? Speak, one word. Why don't we let the public speak? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this application? Well, I don't have anybody. A motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
No favor? Contrary minded? I don't always, but normally, I start off with something. We did a lot of soul searching in approving the prior variance, they were significant, but this was a very unique property. We also had a very unfortunate event. I do have one question before I take yours, it's a little out of order. Does she have any horses now, because you're on a barn?
Yes, she does.
Where'd you keep them?
They're kept on the French Farm on...
Well, then that's not the...
No horses on this property.
On this property, right.
No, from time to time, they're trucked there and...
They bring horses up there to use the arena on a, you know, hours basis.
I just wanted to know if she was boarding, that's all.
No.
Okay. So, as I said, this was very unique. And it really was something that was unique, also pretty unique, to the village. And we felt with the conditions that we put on it, that we could, in this one case, could grant these kinds of variances. I feel good about the fact that now the variances that you're requesting, from the side lots, are less. The fact that we have a covenant with regard to that other property makes the front setback and front lot variances to me less significant than they were before. And so I have no, I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone else want to hear my voice opinion? Now, just so we understand, and this village returning its home, if I missed something, I would ask for a motion to approve required variances. We would need, that resolution to approve would also include the resolution to, what would cancel?
Resign.
Resign.
I would do a motion to resign the side setback, the total side setback, various previously granted on January 14, 2010, and then to grant if that's your intention. The front setback and front yard variances of this, of 45.
Will you include the covenant in that?
Yes.
Subject to.
Subject to all the conditions we had before.
Of the prior variance.
Okay, so.
Keeping the coverage anyway, prior there.
If I may make a motion, and ask for a second. That has two parts. One, to rescind the previously granted side setback and total side setback variances that were previously granted on January 14, 2010. And in place, grant the front setback and front yard variances currently being requested on condition that all of the conditions that we had set forth in granting the variances on January 14, 2010, remain in effect.
All of the conditions, right?
Yes, all of the conditions.
There were no other expressions or anything like that?
Right. Do I have a second? Any discussion? On favor? Any contrary? I got your prayers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
For the approval of those within the section ordered up, like if you do not require any further disbursement, we may.
As long as you, as long as.
Just subject to the same condition.
Right. As long as you satisfied the condition before, you don't have to do anything else. If you haven't satisfied it, I'd rather get through it. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Good singing again. Mr. Wright?
Good night.
Your adso?
Good night.
Good evening. The story of business is in the matter of Chestnut Bridge Associates, continuation of public hearing. I'm going to put that aside for just a minute. Let's take the third matter first next, at 30 Sephar Lane, continuation of public hearing. We've had requests regarding that, to permit a withdrawal of the application for variance. We have denied that request.
No, we did not.
But we.
No, we did not deny it. Board never addressed it.
Well, we continue the hearing rather than.
Yeah.
Thank you. I love being corrected. We did continue the hearing on that rather than make a formal consideration of that. Since then, and actually just before the last meeting, I was not aware of this, we had a letter concerning this, the planning board, about the letter, that said, due to recent developments in the review of the project at 30 Sephar Lane, that are, quote, "beyond the applicant's control," and quoting the whole thing, it has become necessary to revise the site plan for this project. Because they are revising the site plan for this project, I think we want to permit the application to withdraw the application for variances. So can I have a motion permitting the withdrawal of the application for variances?
So would.
Let's do it. Let's deliver in a second.
We have to close the public hearing.
Sorry. I forgot we're still in the public hearing. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No problem.
This is, I don't think we have to hear a public hearing. Any.
You make a motion to close.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, on favor? Our public hearing is closed. Now we've, we'll have to renew that motion to accept the motion to withdraw the application for variances by 30 Sephar Lane. We have a second to that motion? On favor?
Aye.
Any contrary minded? None? Is there any discussion on that? Okay. None? Good. Then that application is withdrawn, and that matters off the agenda. Let's go back to Chestnut Bridge Associates. Told you, you can always. My fault.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Scott Lippert, attorney for Chestnut Bridge Associates LLC, 21 Main Street, Hackensack, Jersey. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some concluding remarks. Those are probably very welcome words here.
Well, I would say that the way we'll proceed tonight is that you can make concluding remarks. I'll ask the public if they want to say anything further, and then you'll get another opportunity to make concluding remarks.
Fair enough.
Sooner or later, someone's going to conclude this. It's like a permutation of a combination. You never really get to zero, but you came close.
Ladies and gentlemen, when you have an issue to decide, and you have a party advancing a very weak argument, that party frequently tries to cloud the issue with extraneous facts and phony issues. And I think that's what we've had to endure here for the last two meetings. So I have to address some of the issues that have been raised, and then we'll get back to what is really a very narrow, specific issue that the board has.
I'll tell you rest of that. I cautioned in the last hearing that I, this board will not countenance ad hominem attacks. I defined that at the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this was not an ad hominem attack.
I know that. But it was close.
No, no, it wasn't close at all. There's a material difference between attacking a person and attacking his arguments.
As long as you attack the argument.
And I.
Lippert, as long as you attack his arguments and not the person, you're fine. That's the difference between an ad hominem attack.
Of course.
There you go. Go ahead.
Of course. So, but once you throw your head into the arena and make arguments, you have to be able to withstand the heat that your argument may not be a very weighty one.
Happy to hear it.
That's all I'm suggesting.
I just want to make sure we're not talking about people, we're talking about arguments. And I know you aren't. That's fine, Mr. Lippert.
So the first one that was advanced related to the, to the application that we made. And the question was asked by one of the opponents of my argument, how can you have a non-party bring an application for variances on a parcel of land they do not own? This was the way it's characterized. The response is, we do not bring an application for variances. This is an application for interpretation. Second, the question was raised, why did we not post on the property of 30 Sephar Lane? The answer to that is, it's not our property, we'd be trespassing if we did so. The board instructed us to post on our property, and we posted on our property. The next argument advanced is that we made an application, again, for property that we don't own. We did not do that. The application was signed by the applicant. Part of your application, which is not terribly well adapted to an application for interpretation as opposed to an application for variances, requires the applicant to fill out a form consenting to entry on his property. We left a lot and block blank on that form because it was a little confusing. But of course, if you wanted to go on to our property, you had our consent. We never purported to consent to allow you to go on to anyone else's property. You wouldn't have had to do so. You already had consent to go on to 30 Sephar Lane's property, and you could have done so because that was part of their application. So.
But you're saying it wasn't part of yours?
No.
Yeah, we understand.
So, and then, you know, the suggestion was made that some, something nefarious had occurred, and we lied, perjured ourselves, or tried to deceive the board. And, you know, that's silly. And just to illustrate how silly that is, the persons who were opposing our application made a number of misstatements. For instance, during sworn testimony, for instance, Mr. Mitzner stated that we had made an application for variances when we had not. Now, I'm not going to accuse him of lying or perjury. The only thing I'm going to accuse him of is making a mistake. Similarly, Mr. Levine in an earlier hearing had characterized the yellow zone as an industrial zone. I think that's clearly an erroneous statement. But again, I'm not going to suggest that he was lying or perjuring himself. He's simply wrong about that. So I think we can get past that, and I think you can rest assured that there's nothing jurisdictionally defective about our application. In his presentation, I think Mr. Levine was on to something when he said, and I'm quoting him here, if you want to legalize something, you change the law. I agree with that. With that one statement, he really made my case and undercut everything else that he said in his entire presentation. He later on said, during the last term, during his presentation, in discussing how the planning board had handled other applications for similar uses, he said, and I'm quoting here, and we, the planning board, he's referring to, he says, we interpreted, and by not having the problem, I feel we interpreted this as a necessary use to support our community. As far as the planning board goes, we have to see what the residents need, what the residents want. You can't start excluding food stores because we have to eat. You can't start excluding landscapers because we don't want to cut our lawns anymore. This, the way he characterized the planning board's approach shows that he's gone completely down the incorrect path in advancing his argument. The planning board does not make decisions about what uses are needed in the village. The planning board's job is to decide whether an application that's filed in front of it conforms to village ordinances and other applicable laws. That's the planning board's job. And if the planning board felt that the ordinance did not address a use that was needed, however they decided the use was needed, the right approach is to inform the village board, you know, our ordinance really ought to address this use. Because it's the village board that makes law. It's the village board that's been elected to make laws. The planning board can't make laws. And the planning board, by interpretation, can't create uses that don't exist in the plain language of an ordinance. The planning board's job most certainly is not to see what the residents need or want. They simply have to decide the application in front of them. The bulk of the presentation that we saw related to other properties in the village. So this gets me full circle back to my original argument. And my original argument, and I'm just going to repeat it briefly because it's been a while since I've been up here, there were rules about how does a board or a court construe an ordinance or a statute? And that's what you're doing here, you're construing an ordinance. And one of the rules is, can be put this way. If the statute or the ordinance is plainly understandable on its face, you should decide the question solely on the basis of the words of the ordinance. You don't look beyond those words. You don't consider outside evidence of what the words are supposed to mean. You apply the plain meaning of the words. So considering a past pattern and practice, which was how it was characterized by my opponents, is out of order here. If, if you think that the ordinance itself is clear. And the question on the clarity of the ordinance is, does the yellow zone permit landscaping, landscaping contract, and wherever you want to characterize it, does it permit that use? And when you look at the plain language, and you're all familiar with the ordinance, and I think I submitted copies as part of my, part of the written materials that I submitted, if you go line by line, which I did earlier, and I'm not going to do again, through that ordinance, you don't see the word landscaping there. And you can't possibly get to landscaping from the office kinds of uses that are permitted in the yellow zone. It just wouldn't be a reasonable thing to do. Which brings up another point, which has some superficial appeal. If you have an ordinance that says, we allow residential use, sorry, we allow retail uses in the zone, and it doesn't list every retail use, maybe it lists butchers and florists, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't list clothing stores. And so the question is, well, does a clothing, is a clothing store permitted use in the retail zone? That's a, that's a very, you know, I think, pretty easy call. But when this.
I guess because you're saying it's a retail use, so therefore.
Of course, of course. But a landscaping use, and you handled this at the last hearing, Mr. Chairman, a landscaping, you know, because it's obvious, that's how you characterize it. You can't get to a landscaping use from office, or from any of the other permitted uses in the yellow zone. You just can't reasonably get there. You can't say that a landscaping use is an office use. It's not. It's clearly not. And, you know, and that's what, that's what they've done. So it doesn't matter. What I say to you is, and I think this should be good news, you don't have to pay any attention to this lengthy presentation about what occurred, and with lots of documents about what occurred in other applications. If you agree with me that it's crystal clear that the ordinance as written doesn't countenance, doesn't contemplate landscaping uses in the yellow zone. So if you agree with me, you never get to any other device to try to interpret the ordinance. You just interpret the plain language. You know, Mr. Levine's argument is different. He said, oh, the ordinance, that's just, that's just words. You know, we at the planning board, we know what the residents need, and if they need it, we'll allow it, even though the ordinance doesn't allow for it.
Well, you should know, by the way, that we have read, and I believe most of us have read, all the material that's been presented, even though, regardless of your argument. We haven't decided which way we're going yet.
I thought nothing, nothing else. The good news is, you don't, you should have read it. And now, and now, and now what I'm suggesting to you is, you don't need to think about it. Because it's completely extraneous. If you agree with me.
Look at the side there.
Oh, that's what, that's what I'm urging you to do. You can differ with me, Mr. Chairman, and you might. I hope not. So if you agree with me that it's crystal clear what the yellow zone allows, and that the yellow zone does not allow landscaping use, that's all you have to do, and that's all you should do. So I guess I want to close with this kind of analogy. There's a very similar rule when it comes to how you construe a contract. There's a rule that says, if the contract contains all the terms and is written in very plain language, and there's no ambiguity, you don't look to any other sort of rules of construction, past practice, or course of conduct, or anything else. You just enforce the contract as written. So to give you an example, if I enter a contract with one of you to sell you a horse, and it's funny that we just had a horse farm here before, the reason, the reason horse came to mind for me when I was thinking about this is that there's a lot, all these law school cases about contracts, there's a lot of them about selling horses. Because this is when these rules developed, when people sold horses. So let's say we entered into a contract to sell a horse, and Mr. Chairman, I entered into a contract with you to sell a horse. And the contract said, I agree to sell, and you agree to buy my horse for $100. And the next day I show up with my horse, and you hand me $75. And you say, here's what I'm paying you. I said, what do you mean? The contract says $100. He said, well, you and I have had dealings before, I bought horses from you before, and we only paid $75 for the other horses. So that's what I'm giving you. We go to court, I submit the contract to the judge, and Mr. Miller, you get up and you say, but Judge, in other transactions we've had with horses, I've only paid $75. And I say, objection. And the judge says, sustain. And the reason he sustains the objection, doesn't listen to that testimony, is if the contract is clear, you never get beyond that. And there's a really good common sense reason for that rule. Otherwise, you have chaos. Otherwise, everything becomes he said, she said. And you should certainly not have that with ordinances. So in closing, first, I want to thank everybody for all your attention. I know it's. I know it's a difficult job being a board member, it's that you don't get a lot of reward for it, and I noticed that you've really paid attention and really conducted yourself professionally under sometimes circumstances that were difficult, and I appreciate that. So, in closing, what I want to say to you, don't let them buy the horse for seventy-five dollars. Thank you.
I have a question for you?
Yeah.
You, as a lawyer, I'm sure, have heard of precedents, right?
Of course.
And would you consider that maybe what was put forward was to try to establish if there was a precedence before?
Yes, but my argument is, it doesn't matter, because there's, the rule that I'm citing, which I think is much more applicable, is that in reading an ordinance, if, if the ordinance is clear, you don't look at precedents, you don't look at other cases. You shouldn't, you shouldn't look at other cases. If the ordinance says what it says, and it's crystal clear, you should, you should just interpret the plain meaning of those words and nothing else. And I think that's the rule that applies here.
But provided the rules are crystal clear...
If you think that there's room to interpret the yellow zone to allow landscaping use based only on the words, not anything else, then you and I are going to disagree about that.
Right. You know, because there is no way that you can put every single use, and it is included or excluded from a...
Of course, but I, but I think the difference is, what I tried to explain, for instance, in the, if it doesn't list every retail use, you're still dealing with a retail use. If it doesn't list every office use, it doesn't have to say you can have an accounting office, you can have a legal office, you can have a medical office, you can have an insurance office, it doesn't have to say that. But, and that, I think, is within, fairly within what you're, what you're describing. What is not fairly within what you're describing is a landscaping, because that's from left field relative to the words of the ordinance. It is not within, it is, there's a large set of office uses or retail uses. A baker is a subset of retail uses. A landscaping contracting yard is not a subset of office uses. I think that's, that's the difference. I think, honestly, honestly, I think this is a very easy call.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I can say that.